Five thirty. Man, you'll definitely get that better. You and I spent three hours the other night practicing. Yes, I wasted my time. Sorry, I gotta look at your microphone. Sorry. Okay, back to the council meeting. Thursday, five thirteen, twenty twenty-three at five thirty. I don't know why I put in all that. Called order, do I have an option of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Good second, and yeah, good. And then all those people please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Honestly, now with that, we'll move on to our first topic, possible purchase of rifles for the Coast Department. We pardon, welcome.
Everybody, I just want to say thanks to Matt. Matt has been running around crazy this last hour, so just give it up for him a little bit. And relax for now, because he is the kind of set this all up. So we're here to talk about patrol rifles. Change in the law brings us here today. So Senate House Bill twelve forty banned the sale of most semi-automatic rifles. Citizens can still own assault-style rifles, but they are not allowed to buy or import most AR-type weapons, which include parts. Law enforcement agencies are exempt, but police officers as individuals are not. Licensed firearm manufacturers can sell to armed forces or to any law enforcement agency for law enforcement purposes, or to a person who does not reside in Washington. So I'm acutely aware of the gun violence issue and the mass shootings that plagued our country. I brought in our firearms crew tonight. Officer Jason Benson and Sergeant Red Maurice Parish, and then Sergeant Rob Gross, which is not here right now because he is busy with a call at the moment. But he will be coming in. And these gentlemen, Rob and Red in particular, these two sergeants have been in firearms for our department for over two, twenty years, decades. And have done an amazing job. Officer Benson has jumped right in the role because we wanted to have a transition when those two retire to have the next unit come in. Unfortunately, we lost Officer Lake Stevens, but we will have a transition where we have those two in the firearms unit. So after the rifle discussion, we'll have a quick presentation on handguns for any additional questions that you have. So I'm gonna turn it over to Benson.
Next slide, please. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Sergeant Parrish with the firearms training team. We're gonna start off with if this works. I was hoping you'd spend a couple of minutes here to watch this video of an incident that occurred last summer in the city of Tacoma.
What started off as a routine call quickly escalated to a deadly shootout in South Tacoma in August. Officers responded to a domestic violence call on South Monroe Street after a man called nine-one-one and reported a relative of his assaulted him. Ring camera video released by the Pierce County Force Investigation Team shows Peter Collins yelling at someone before cutting to body cam footage from an officer instructing Collins not to go into a car. Soon after, the shooting starts.
He's in the back of the house.
The video cuts to another scene where shots are heard while the officer says Collins has a long gun over his radio.
He has a long gun. Get units here.
Investigators say Collins left the area with two semi-automatic rifles, two handguns, and a large amount of ammunition. The video then shows another officer driving to Collins' location and pulling a rifle out of his trunk. After multiple shots are heard, the officer fires once in return.
Are those shots coming from the outside?
I don't know.
X-ray three-one-six, shot fired, suspects down.
Sergeant Darren Moss of the Pierce County Sheriff's Department says this kind of dangerous situation can be prevalent in domestic violence calls.
You're walking into a space where you've never been, but they have an advantage over you. So if they have a hiding spot or a place that they can get to before you're able to find them, you know, those are one of the things that we have to think about. But again, with domestic violence being one of the most common calls for police officers to deal with, again, they can be most volatile as well.
The team investigating the shooting says that Colin had two gunshot wounds. One appeared to be from an officer and another appeared to be self-inflicted. The Pierce County Medical Examiner's Office ruled Colin's death a homicide from a rifle wound to the chest. The investigation is still ongoing. But for now, we're live in South Tacoma. Lionel Donovan, King Five News.
For the benefit of the councilmembers, a couple of things about this video that you should be aware of is that in the first section where you saw the officers initially engaging the suspect who was shooting. The rounds were whizzing over their heads. The second part where you see the officer fire the single shot, a couple of things about that. He was also receiving incoming fire, rounds going over the top of his patrol car. And the distance he shot at was one hundred and eighty-three yards. Almost two football fields. And using his police patrol rifle, one shot, he saved his life. Something to be aware. So a little bit about the history about our police patrol rifle program here, Lake Forest Park Police Department. So in two thousand, the police department began initial training on active shooter responses. This was a direct response to call line which occurred. In two thousand and two, the city authorized and buy police patrol rifles for purchase, and the police are standard carbines with external lights. Were illuminating threats and basic sites. It's a mid-tier brand. In two thousand and three, initial training includes for all of our department members with rifle qualification started for all of our patrol officers and detectives. Everybody in the police department gets brought to speed. In two thousand and eleven, we had one police patrol rifle which is converted from the seized property to duty use. Now, this puts us at six police patrol rifles. And in two thousand and twelve, we upgraded a little bit these police patrol rifles to include reliable sighting systems for improved accuracy, which is important. Improved lighting technologies, so we actually had better lighting to identify our threats. And now we have a total of six rifles with optics and lights that are put into duty use. Next slide, please. So in two thousand and eighteen, excuse me, we make minor upgrades to make these six police patrol rifles ambidextrous so that officers, both left and right-handed, could use they successfully. And interestingly enough, from two thousand and three until two thousand and twenty-two, several proposals are presented by your firearms training team to have the city equip each officer with their own police patrol rifle. And over those times, the proposals were tabled, stalls are actually outright rejected. From two thousand and fourteen onward, officers are personally using their own personally-owned police patrol rifles as part of their duties. They own the rifles. They're responsible for the maintenance and care of these rifles, but they're using them to defend the citizens' Lake Forest Park with no compensation. This helps us with rifle shortages in these cars and with our officers. And in two thousand and twenty-three, substitute House Bill twelve forty has signed into law the severely limits and prevents officers from using their own police patrol rifles for duty use. Next slide, please. Now, due to the substitute House Bill twelve forty, officers who were utilizing their personally-owned equipment for duty are not doing so anymore. We have six aging-out patrol rifles that are used by officers in the course of their duties in protection of the citizens. And we simply do not have enough equipment to maintain the coverage on the road as well as when yearly training occurs. As a matter of fact, we just had training in which we had six people training and only four rifles that we could use for the officer bits.
With the, our equipment that we're using, both handgun and rifle, it's very much customized for the officer. So their personnel rifles is outfitted within a reason or a guide that has been approved for their best interest. It helps customize it for them when they're deploying it, using it, training with it. That also goes for their handguns. It helps us, we call it zero again, when we, when that shot needs to be made for, for training or duty use, they can make it effectively with minimal margin of error. Next slide, please. This is our estimated cost and layout for a police patrol rifle. It is currently what we have on our six right now. With some addition, this is, again, this is estimated, but it's gonna be about forty-five hundred dollars. And this also reflects exactly what is equal police department, which is one of our small coalition police agencies, C-S-M-O. Issues to each and every one of their officers. Please.
So the estimation is forty-five hundred oh five. We have twenty-one commissioned officers, which is a total of ninety-four thousand six hundred and five. What are asked is, I've got several options here. First is just a budget adjustment that allows for the full purchase, ninety-four six oh five. The other option is we can use, we have a BDA that we were approved in the mayor's last budget, city council approved, where the BDA is that bidirectional amplifier that goes in the city. The cost of that was budgeted at sixty thousand. It ends up that through good negotiations with, or not good negotiations, but proposals came in at about thirty thousand. So there's a thirty thousand dollar saving right there. So one other option was use those savings to cover the cost and then a budget adjustment for the remaining. A third option would use the BDA savings and also just forego the locker room. The locker room was budgeted at ninety thousand dollars. And then basically have the full purchase of the rifles with just that, no budget adjustment, other than saying that we're be using the locker room funds to do that. And then I would go out and research other ways to pay for the locker room. I've been spending a lot of people, other people's money in our city for a very long time with grants with the foundation. This particular issue I just can't do because it's not legal. The locker room is something that I can ask for donations, get the equipment and installation in, but I can't ask the foundation to purchase rifles. So that's why we are here today, to lower the initial cost. When you look at it, we, we could purchase fifteen rifles. The six remaining rifles would go to myself, the two lieutenants, and the two detectives. And that would lower the cost down to sixty, sixty-seven, five, seventy-four. The other option that we have is purchase the current staffing level on patrol, which is thirteen. That's fifty-eight, five, sixty-five, and then purchase future rifles as new officers are solo in the field. So example, we hired an officer now, a year later, they're now solo. We purchased the gun at that point that actually would extend out in our budget cycle. So by a couple, now it's in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and then we have more officers down the road, then it's a little bit better to digest in our budgets. To lower the cost of the, and the other option is lowering the cost of the proposed outfitted rifle system. So these guys are gonna go with the best equipment. They're gonna get what we, we obviously need to do, but there is negotiations and equipment. We can find cheaper ways to doing that. So basically, it's finding the same equipment at lower negotiated prices. So I think we've demonstrated over the years that we negotiate well and find the best prices, and it's always in the financial best interest of the city. So we, we kind of went a little high on here, so we have that idea. But more than likely, I'm gonna end up lowering it by getting the equipment that we, that we need, but also at a better range. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'm sure you do. I'd love to take questions now. And then after we do that, we're gonna have a short little presentation on handguns, so you have an insight of our other weapon system. Yes, thank you.
You know, when we make major purchases like the vehicles, we think about how long it lasts, so that, you know, as we plan budgets, you know, we know what the prime of the investment pans out. And so what do you think about rifles like this? What is their sort of life cycle?
So they'll answer that, because they're, they're better at that. I would say that the rifles we have right now are twenty years old.
So are councilmembers. Some of the rifles that we have right now are actually about ten years old, but as technology has changed or as they get used, like anything, they wear out. An average lifespan under normal training and duty use for us, you can potentially see these rifles lasting us ten years with upgrades to optics as things change or as technology improves or as things break. A standard police rifle has apparently nominal lifespan under our current use. So it would be an investment, but an investment that would, as we have in the past, ten or more years.
And I will add that I'm not a gun guy. These are my experts. But I would think that if we had a pool of guns, they're going to break faster because of the use. When everybody has their own individual guns, they are able to take care of them in a better fashion, and they don't have as much threat there.
Thank you for your service. And well, the question I had was on the rifles themselves, to some degree, for your presentation are personalized for each officer's use. As we have turnover in the department, will that basically get current additional cost for customization, and will that be a nominal cost or will that be fairly expensive?
The customization, so the, the package would be issued to each individual officer as is that was presented. If there, because the new bill that was signed in, that customization is limited. So the only things that would, an officer would do on their own price, their own budget, would be the optics, flashlight, everything else they cannot purchase at all anymore. So those would be the only three things that they can do, but it's out of their pocket if they wish to do it.
The biggest customization and necessity for individual issue rifles is the zero. And the confidence to also have zero. So when I is zero with an optic, I see the aperture, I see the reticle the way my eyes sees it, my brain sees it, and it is not exactly the same as everybody else's. And once I press the trigger and that bullet's moving, the gun is moving, which affects the path of the bullet. And the way I hold the rifle, the way Sergeant Parrish and the way Officer Benson holds rifle, we're all different. We all hold that rifle differently. And every single thing that you do to that rifle, even after you have what you perceive to be the side picture, influences the path of the bullet. And so for an officer to have confidence to take a shot, a life-saving shot, that requires their own rifle zeroed with that optic for them. So that officer retires, releases, serves the department, okay, give it to a new officer, but they're gonna zero it. And they're gonna have their own confidence in their rifle, and they're gonna be able to perform at their best.
Councilmembers, as an example I can give you is that, let's say, a motor vehicle. That motor vehicle may go to another person, but they can adjust the seats, they can adjust the mirrors, but the car is essentially the same. And this is what we're proposing, this package, that that car is going to get presented to the next person. All they're gonna do is they're simply going to adjust the seats, mirrors, to make sure it fits and drives for them. But the initial outlay cost is for this package, which can move to the other officers. They just adjust, and about the same cost. Yes. There's only, we have to take into account for increased cost of manufacturing, those things that you are.
My body.
That was my question. Particular, this is a report, these, similar idea.
Councilmember Goldman.
Yeah, thanks, and thanks for giving us these different budget options. So you had mentioned there's one where you don't purchase six of the rifles, and those would go to you, the lieutenants. How often would you say it happens where you would need to go on patrol with a rifle?
Very rare, but if there's an active shooter, if there is some kind of situation like that, it is all hands on deck.
And would you feel comfortable, if we went with the purchase fifteen rifles, and then we have the other six, would you feel comfortable going out with one of the six?
I would feel comfortable with it, because right now, that's exactly what I've been using. I don't have my own personal rifle that I bring to work, so I use one of the rifles that we currently have. But if I were to grab one just right off the rack right now, I would not be confident or comfortable in shooting that weapon live, because it's not zeroed in for me. So when I go to training and I pick up a weapon, the first thing we do is we zero in to make sure that I'm right on target, then we complete the training. So that's exactly why it's important to have everybody individualized to their weapon.
And just a clarification, it looks like it's a dollar amount, but item two, where you've only purchased the current staff level, you'd still be assigning the three rifles or the six rifles to the chief, and it's correct, is one of the clear.
That is correct, yeah. There is, there is the idea that we can take these, these rifles, turn them in, get credit, and then get credit for these things. I do understand that, you know, the council does not want war guns going out to be sold. I understand that philosophy. The thing is, is those rifles wouldn't end up in Washington State, because you can't purchase those guns in our state anymore. But I think that we would push it, the, the weapons that we have, until they're broken, they just don't work anymore, and then they just end up getting destroyed.
And with the new law, if you were to, if someone were to forfeit one of these type of weapons, would we be able to keep it, or would we have to destroy it? What's, what's the law?
Right, if it's coming to a law enforcement agency, or is under substitute House Bill twelve four, whatever it's gonna be codified now. The agents can't take receipt of that. The agency can supply it as an agency-type weapon. The value, of course, is how the citizen wishes to have it taken care of. Do they want it destroyed, or are they willing to spread it to the police department for transitional use? That's gonna be, as the law stands right now, that we can, as an agency, take possession of it and convert it into use.
And I would like some consistency, so if somebody turns in a rifle that is not part of the system that we're using, then we start putting different pieces on, and then it complicates this.
Is there a discount for volume?
Yes, that was.
In theory, yes. If, there is a company called Proforce, it's a, it's a law enforcement distributor. They basically would take our proposed budget or package, start, put it together for us, and then it's a full purchase. So that's one of our options to, that's why I put estimated, because that could lower the cost in total. And following up with that, councilmembers, then as you know, the greater the quantity, the better the discount. So if we're talking about purchasing at fifteen or higher, more likely than not, yes, we could probably see some savings in that.
Yes. So just to follow up, we're to do the thirteen, and we have the two open positions, and those were to be hired. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be purchasing their duty rifles in a year when they.
Entry level, most likely, laterals.
Lateral.
Probably about three to five months, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay.
So they would be likely issued one of our rifles, the six rifles at that point, just so that they can get training on it, and they would use those. And then once we know that they are going to be part of it, or I could probably direct a, the one-year probation period. Once they hit that, then we'll, you know, do it. That's internally how I have to figure that out. The difference would, would be between a lateral and an entry level. Yes.
So, thank you for these questions, and thank you guys really for all this information. A couple of things, so the financial decision really would be, does it make more sense to get the better discount and buy the fifteen now? Or, or, or have, no, how many it's.
There's twenty-one is the, the best case scenario, but the most expensive.
And, you know, what kind of discount could we get for that versus spreading it out over time for, you know, some of the scenarios here? So I personally will rely on my colleagues and budget and me to figure that one out.
Sure.
But to, I think I want to ask a question, not really so much for my own reasons, but, but so the public is really aware of, of everything that goes on, even in a city like Lake Forest Park. I think it's probably really hard for a lot of people in Lake Forest Park to imagine that these type of things might be needed in our city. And so I think it might be good for you guys to tell us a little bit about. I know you don't have a crystal ball, and nobody can tell, it could happen any minute, right? But have you seen instances where the rifles have been needed?
Okay, so it's, this is two layers. One is, any city is vulnerable. We do have the town center, we have two elementary schools. At any time, somebody could, you know, that could happen, and we're prepared for that. The second part of that is we have plenty of calls for rifles that have deployed. I don't have the exact number, but it always depends on the call. So if you have your regular traffic stop, and you go up, and then something goes a little haywire, the officer's pulling out their handgun, because it's an immediate, I need to do something right now. If they get a call, say that officer's on a traffic stop, and they, and the officer says this person has a gun, the second backing responding officer, it's supposed to be the, the cover, that officer is going to be thinking, I, I need to pull out my rifle on this particular call, because now I'm approaching a violent encounter, and I have to be prepared to take distance and time and using that rifle. These guys are my instructor. I, he's my instructor when I was a baby officer, so if you guys want to jump in on any of those.
Chief, councilmember, I think you asked a question, and for the benefit of both the councilmembers and the general public, is that I'm gonna give you two quick examples, first of which is that one of the war school shootings that we had occurred in one of the most cruel places, Washington State, that was south of Spokane. First officers that came to that active shooting in a school had long guns, had patrol rifles, and they were spotted. And I'm gonna give you a second example that's personal for me, because I got called out that night to assist, is that when there was the officer involved shooting and the tragic death of an officer, it's a ball, our neighbor. It was late forest park officers that were first on scene to back all the police officers. And they deploy with their equipment, including our police patrol rifles. And they help perimeter, they help positions, and they have those long guns to protect themselves and the incoming officers and their fellow fallen officers. So we absolutely have, have employed these rifles in real-world situations. And as we know, unfortunately, the way the tragic situations are, is that even in the smallest of cities, it could be just that.
And every one of the officers, including myself, have deployed the rifle in our city. And Officer Benson had a shooting up at, with the apartment complex. Ballenger Estates.
Right next to Wildwood's apartments, right next door, is a set of condos or complexes. It's a very long eight minutes standing there waiting for a whole bunch of friends to show up and assist. Then I was, I was standing there ready to go with my patrol rifle, because it was a shooting with the victim, so. And then my partner showed up with it as well, and shortly showed up with all of theirs, and H1 was ready to go.
That is real-life application. It all depends on the call and what type of call it is.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll move on. So the guns that are forty-five hundred dollars this year, and that'd be probably fifty-five hundred dollars next year. I just bought it. I just ordered a brand-new truck, almost cost, which is a twenty-one rifle, so I think everybody's officer we have likes definitely worth forty-five hundred dollars and a lot more, and they're another one asset we had. If you guys decide to do this, let's not be round like we've done with our radios forever. They deserve the best. They deserve a locker room, too. This isn't a game. You know, this is what, this is what our citizens want, is to be safe. So thirty dollars, thirty thousand dollars, you know, that's just do the right thing, because it's important that we keep the police department as safe and as nimble as we can, I guess, would be the word that I can say, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted this discussion to happen, and the budget committee kind of figure out what our best solution is here. And I know that these guys will have to quote front of me in the very second you guys say yes, because I know that we want this done, and we need to get this done, because I don't want the officers operating with the six. Now we're gonna move on, because I want to give you a real quick insight into our handguns, because there's nothing I'm really asking for here, but I want you to understand what we do, what we've gone through, what we're, what we have now, so you have that knowledge. That's number two. And, yeah, definitely.
Okay, so just gonna explain what we're doing with the handgun program right now. And that's cool, so we can move past that. So our plan is to issue nine-millimeter pistols of Glock and Smith and Wesson MP. Next slide. And they'll look like that, the Glocks all look like Glocks. And the M and Ps are, next slide, please. Very similar, but they're made by Smith and Wesson. And the idea with issuing different handguns, all nine-millimeter, is that it's gonna fit everybody's hand differently. Sometimes we get officers with just huge hands, sometimes little tiny hands that can just barely hold onto the smallest grip of an MP. So officers want a bigger, heavier gun, and you'll, you'll see very subtle differences in the, in the Glock models and the MP models. Some are just a little bit longer and heavier. The grips, the grip angle is different on the Glock versus the MP, but basically, of having two choices, essentially, we're gonna be able to fit the correct gun to the correct shooter With their anatomy and their preferences. Next slide. And then all the guns that we're going to purchase going forward will be ready to accept a red dot optic, just like this. That's just an example of a good one on the market right now that works and works very well. Uh, so then our officers, some of them are already carrying it. And a little. A little bit of a history. So in nineteen ninety-six, basically the FBI decided that. That bonded bullet technology for the nine millimeter was inadequate due to a couple of failures, shootings they had, and so they developed the forty cal. And just like every other law enforcement agency, Lake Forest Park jumped on FBI recommendation, let's forty cal. Uh, and we, in twenty twelve, we upgraded our ancient blocks to Gen fours. Also in forty, Smith and Wesson caliber. Uh, twenty seventeen. Lock has phased out Gen four and they're now making phase or Gen five. The department still has just the Gen fours. And then in twenty eighteen or about that time. The bonded bullet technology has increased to the point where nine millimeters are actually more effective than forty cal now. And next slide. And. They are easier to shoot because the recoil is actually less and so it's more controllable for the officer. They're having, they're able to shoot more accurately, more quickly, have less misses, a less round stun range going somewhere other than into the target. Um, and then just a few years ago, these, the same red dot that we have on our rifles for many years now, which is the industry center for how to do things. How you're able to pick up the site easily. And in low light conditions where all of our shootings are for the most part. They finally figured out how to make it small enough to put on a pistol. And law enforcement agencies everywhere are adopting this to the point where Officer Benson, I think you. You told me that when you went to the latest, the last pistol instruction for trainers.
March of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Lake Forest Park officers were the only ones that did not have it.
Literally the only agency. Out of any of them, we don't have again, but we haven't approved and we've been using it. Let's see. Those, those of us that have been using approved red dot optics, we're paying for it ourselves. We're putting it on nine millimeter pistols that we bought ourselves. And we're performing better and safer than just like with the rifles and with the department issue archaic equipment. Our scores, everybody on red dot scores goes up. Confidence goes up, low light performance goes way, way up. And especially the performance for older officers have, they're having vision issues that it starts to report.
Don't talk about red.
Yeah, well. Yeah, so officers have been. I just got the number from Officer Benson because he keeps track of this kind of thing. Of all officers in our department. We all, yes, the next one. Everybody but three officers in our department provides their own pistol. And many, many of them are adding their own red dot at their own expense. And nine millimeter, and there's only three bolt outs in the department that are just using the old forty cal block that's issued. And she's one.
And those three officers have also expressed their willing and want to go to a nine millimeter platform. Uh, they're just foregoing the wanting to stay for the current time.
So we are. We have been studying for a while now and intend to move everybody to nine millimeter. Stop paying for more expensive forty cal ammunition that is harder to shoot and less effective. And we're going to combine that with the right pistol for the right hand and a red dot side.
We've already approved the budget for this, is that right?
I'll, I'll explain. My second problem.
I got lost in this slides.
Well, these are just statistics for council members and for the public. This is real world statistics. That we have seen. With officers using their own equipment. In protection and defense of citizens. This is their own equipment they're using. And these are the scores. Huge improvements. Which translates to more effective hits, more effective work. Less liability.
Excellent. And this is basically just the background on why nine millimeter is the great round right now. So yeah, that's what I just, that's our plan is. Yeah.
Yes. Would you say this is state of the art right now and is the state of the art going to change in the next couple of years, two, three, four, five years?
Mine's been around for a really long time. It was the preferred round for defense, police work and. It's back. There's not really a reason to change it since it's working really well. So unless you come up with a phaser or a.
That was my question.
Probably. It's not going to be anything different than nine. Nine is, we're just going to get better and better and better.
Okay.
And follow up to that question, council member, is that in fact, the handguns themselves, everything changes, our cars changes, handguns are adopting changes as well. Uh, the, the platforms that we're proposing here have been effective established platforms that have upgraded over the years. What we're proposing now is handguns that we know will be effective for an extended period of time. Using a caliber that has been pretty very effective for what we're doing. So this is a positive investment that. The council and associates making this, because this is something Lake Forest Park has a history of hanging on to our duty equipment for long periods of time. Almost like me driving my car, which is now fifteen plus your.
Back to that follow up question, what's the useful life of the, of the pistols?
We, the, the amount of training even on our off time that our officers do. The pistol will. It will become our cake before it wears out and breaks.
So I just want to clarify, we were, we issued Glock forty caliber guns. That's been going on for many years. I approve now the, uh, over the last few years, the nine millimeter platform. So because I did that, officers wanted to move to that because it's more customized older and shooting better. So more people bought their own guns. Um, and then the red dot came out and we didn't have the funds. This is during COVID, a lot of reasons that I gotta, you know, keep it down. These guys are selling me right now on like, we need to get this done. It's already been sold. It's been approved in the, uh, in the policy that they're allowed to do the red dots. Uh, what we need to do forward is get these systems onto their weapons. Um, so when we have a, a new officer, there is now a choice. They can go with a Smith and Wesson Glock nine millimeter platform. And then at that point in time, we would supply the night, the red dot system. Uh, my plan is again, to go to the foundation and say, hey, I'd like to outfit all of our weapons with the red dots. And I can do that right now because it's legal. I can't do it with the rifles because of the new law. So. It is very similar to what we did with the rifles. Where people started bringing in their own weapon systems that were approved through their armory. Uh, but now we were stuck in a corner and right now with the handguns are not.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. Appreciate Sergeant, your comments about the different, uh, different sides of the platform and being vigorous for us than I know there it's cheaper. You know, having the same ammunition, there's no question there on this scale there. And I think that the, the seventeen and nineteen and the S and W make a lot of sense. It also makes a lot of sense for us as a community to make sure that our officers shouldn't be provide, having to provide their own guns unless they feel like they need to be. Something, have something unique and then it needs to be approved by an armory. Um, I think that going forward, we need to look at this community. How we make sure that our officers are equipped appropriately. Yeah, you know, from rifles to, to the handguns, the rifles question about, you know, transitioning to that is, is a bigger one. Handguns, I think is, is a no brainer to me, making sure that we go to a place where everybody doesn't have to provide their own handgun unless it's like specifically. Authorized by the armory because of circumstances or whatever armor, I should say. And, um, the city needs to step up and make sure we have you, you all equipped appropriately. So I think this is a great way to go that, you know. The forty cal is something that, um, it is something that is not, uh, it is antiquated and it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I think for us to have two different types of ammunition in, in the field makes no sense whatsoever.
We actually have three types of ammunition because we have forty-five for the SWAT officer. So.
Okay.
I'd rather just order.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, the chance not forty-five and he said, no, I'll take mine. Um, so to follow up to that question, a couple of things for the council members of the general public, because that Glock has. The generation pistols that we have now is no longer supported by Glock, the sense they're, they're basically selling spare parts. To law enforcement agencies, but that will be phased out, which means that the ability to prepare certain things goes away. So it, we, we, it forces those to upgrade that. Second of all, when we talk about the cost per round and Sergeant Gross and Officer Benson here, you know, verify this with me, but. You're looking at almost one third more cost for forty, forty-five versus going to nine millimeter, which is a cost. Going across the board and adopting a nine millimeter across the board, not only does it give us improved bullets, but it gives you the taxpayers. The increase saves.
And my responsibility is to, uh, when it's time to get equipment, present that to the budget mayor and let you all know that. Uh, I don't think you've ever had this discussion with the council about weapon systems. And so this is a good insight for you and it's already been, I think, uh, forty-five minutes. So I, I want to, uh, if there's any other questions. All right. Appreciate your time.
I just made one comment here. So. You all know that I come from a different place and I never saw a handgun until. I arrived in the United States, so a lot of this also, so. The whole gun thing for me has been, you know, very hard cultural shift. But I've been here long enough now to understand that. It ain't going to change anytime soon, both and you even have to say. And you have to do what you have to do, we must say. So despite the fact that I hate the damn things, I am. On board.
Totally understand. Thank you, council.
You guys, thank you very much. I wonder, hang around for a while and I guys appreciate it. This time we'll welcome to the table our Public Works Director, Jeff Ferro.
Welcome. Good evening, everybody. All right, we're going to talk about Capitol. Or maybe. Volume. I'm on, yeah. Not on the laptop, okay.
Do you want to sit over here so you're closer? More than.
You can take my.
I'm just offering an air seat for you. No, I just. You'll never make it.
Okay, okay. So again, this is going to be definitely going to have a book regarding that. You mentioned, uh, in a plan that we talked about before. Next slide. All right, just some basic overview for our payment statistics, statistics. We've got fifty-five, roughly fifty-five lay miles, several lay miles in a city. If we have an expected lifetime of about twenty years. For those roadways. That's the typical target that most people, a lot of people do use and at one million. Dollars now, mile payment just to resurface. That doesn't actually to twenty twenty-three because, um, we'll see that. If we have to research everything right now, it's fifty-five million. Um, if we wait for construction, that's a couple of experience reconstructed, you look at that like in five to seven times as much. And our current budget is about five hundred thousand. So doing the math on that, with a half mile per. Year. We would pay borrow of our city roads in about a hundred or ten years. So becoming traction will be the shortfall that we may have in our. We paid. Next slide. All right, so with our, our. ILA with King County, they're the administrator of the project. They do the engineering, bidding, contract execution and project management. They do not do work. A contractor is doing work in this area, it's Lakeside Industries. They do have a capacity that they have to meet. Or they have a cap that they have. Um, so if you're trying to find for us. I'm sorry, trying to find for the eight different communities that we have was on the right hand side, our portion is about four hundred fifty-nine thousand. Again, they have their capacity issues as well as timing issues in which they have to complete their projects. One of the things I do want to mention is that payment management is not construction management or it's not project management is. Very specific subset for civil engineering and. Again, takes, takes the dedication and. A lot of experience to worry, what, uh, what to look for in getting.
Yeah, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
It's not the same group that just did the barge away, is it?
Yeah.
This month's newsletter.
All right, all right. This slide here shows the payment degradation curve for any payment and for all of these degradation curves will be different based on city. Like, each different segment of roadway could be different, but just have this similar curve where for the first period of time. It does dip down and then it kind of levels up and at some point it does fall off, basically falls off the cliff. Well, our target is in somewhere between the fifty-five and seventy range. If we could do some rehabilitation or resurfacing at that point. We can save ourselves a ton of money. Then if we let it go for another year, two, three, four years. Again, that's going to drop there. It's typically about thirty percent. And that small payment lights that we're showing there, it's usually about twelve percent. So that's. That peak time is right next fifty to seventy range. So next slide. So what we do with that rehabilitation and that resurfacing is we bring that PCI value back up to something, say ninety-five or so with a resurface. And then the curve starts over again. A lot of this is, is already in a science. It's not just one or the other, uh, to select the right street, right streets at the right. Next slide. And then you pack it, you have, again, this whole slide deck is in there. Yeah, I left and go through all of these of course, but there's six or seven categories, some conditions that most people use. There's the rating that you see up there as well as definition, how those ratings are, are come to. And then just a note here, just because payment looks good, doesn't mean that it is. Stressful sound and whatnot. And we'll see that later on with one of the. Three selections that we can have. So next slide. So what we're looking for when we look at resurfacing, we try to find those, those target streets of between, say, forty and seventy. If the streets are above seventy, they're, they're in pretty good shape. There's very little that we can do at that point for should be done as a very crack ceiling or smaller. Rehabilitation, but those streets that are forty and below, they've already passed their, like, there's to the point where that's a reconstruction. And we're just doing triage on it to make sure that we can at least make it possible. I don't foresee any, any of those streets below forty in our city. Scott and his crews have done a great job keeping up with everything. So again, I have not seen any of those. Uh, in my, my drive around the city. And I will, for the sake of time, I'll go through these pretty quickly. Seventy to a hundred is kind of our, our targets to keep in the low seventies to seventy-five. Uh, that's just examples of what typically those ratings look like. Again, just because you see something doing that, that's what it is, but. It's a big, good generalization of what you see and those different categories. Next slide. And here's, here's forty to seventy. Those are probably more in the lower rankings for this. Uh, I would probably put those probably between forty and fifty, but I think all of those, um, those aren't really rough shape. But those are the kinds of streets that we want to catch maybe a little bit earlier than what they, what they show here. And next slide. And then again, this is. Yeah, we, we will never see this here.
So a question for the fail, what we're seeing underneath the asphalt is kind of the base has been exposed essentially.
That's the base.
The asphalt is completely failed.
Absolutely, yes.
And if we have to do a reconstruction, we have to take the whole base out as well, or we're taking down some and then rebuild it back up, not just asphalt overlay, correct?
I would. You have to see what face looks like. Depends on why it fails.
Okay.
It's a case failure. It's just not an asshole there and that's.
Okay.
But next slide, please. That's again, in your packet already, a couple of things I just want to point out, one of the things. To, one of the things that a lot of folks are doing is, is. Picking streets that are geographically in the same area for globalization costs, make sure to keep sure that keep that as low as possible. Um, and also when you bring what kind entire community or subdivision. It's really an equitable thing also. And that also provides, you know, for efficiencies, cost effectiveness, the profiles like today process the city. So that when you go, can you go through an area, you don't just do much treaters or hop scot from place to place. And with, with this county down in Cal, California, every time a roadway gets resurfaced, set evaluates updates to install bike lanes and identify. Possible bike rights, same thing with our pedestrian access. That's. And then that's one this purpose, this program is for is to maintain what we have. That's just opportunity to put in pedestrian access, surely do that. As we see on the next few slides. Some of it, sometimes they are very limited. Next slide. So one of the comments from the last meeting was, let's, let's look at ride more access around our schools. So what I did was I took the. School locations and put in one mile radius around, uh, each of those schools and lo and behold, it covers pretty much the entire city. For priority sake, I took it down to a half mile and that kind of gets us down to a much more manageable size to look at and deal with. Next slide. So we're looking at, uh, elementary, this is the circle for half mile and everyone thinks there's some overlap with Brookside also on the next slide. Most of the limits for that again. Sorry, Phil, but it's. Incorporate all of boundary weight. Uh, on this, on this slide, just as we talk about pedestrian access and also the paving. On the left hand side, you see that it shows that the, uh, minimum paid with or typical payment with is only twenty feet. Uh, and the roadway typically is, you know, twenty four feet, sidewalks, uh, that sidewalk, um, cut off from the code. The first two five foot sidewalk with extra, uh, it's about quarter or so on that side for backfill, uh, for our streets. Uh, and extrude curb, we should have five feet from the back dish to curb. Back pay also. So again, we start looking at twenty two feet plus five feet towards the pathway or sidewalk. Uh, against about twenty seven, but. Cross section. And also if we do, if we do have a road that's not twenty, um, not twenty seven feet on the pavement like with. And we do want to add that, um, there's some blood control and blood quality issues that. Yeah, that's not part of, of what the payment programs. It's definitely. It's like this. So here's kind of a, a nuts and bolts of it. A couple of Sundays ago, I went out to, uh, drive all the streets within that, those two half mile radius. And cataloging most of the streets, we've got, uh, and there you can see that each of the boxes, which you can see the rating as well as the, the street, the pavement. Uh, pavement with, um, see most of those streets are in pretty good shape. Uh, the ones I would point to, uh, obviously is the sixty, which is the whole, whole set that on three fourths. The sixty five and fifty on three third avenue cul-de-sac. And seventy five and twenty five, that's going to be available now, what we can possibly do it. Again, I go back to the payment name look okay, but the underlying base and other conditions need to be looked at as well. You can't just take the, the L C I rate. So again, you see a lot of the streets are that, uh, have pathways, have the wider payment with already thirty fifth, for example, thirty seven. Hundred eighty seven. So those are the streets again, they're wide enough to accommodate those, those combinations. Obviously, you can see that on forty eighth place, we've got, uh, pathway. On the inside, we've got balance here that has full sidewalks and more pathways on both sides. So it's fairly. Fairly robust, uh. Pedestrian access we have at that side. And scooting down just a little bit to the next slide. For this, so. And this is kind of where we have that. Inclusion of both of the half, uh, half mile radius. Um, so thirty fifth, we do have wide enough against twenty, twenty eight feet wide. So we have pathway there, inside eighty five. Again, all of these numbers are. In a really good shape, ninety eight, but ninety, uh, again, payment with, again, being twenty three, seventeen, twenty three feet. Really does not accommodate pedestrian access.
What do you measure from and to?
Edge of payment.
And that's, that's not the right way though. The right of way in all these cases is wider. That's just the current existing pavement. Correct. Okay, correct.
One of the quick question to, uh, the new, uh, T V D, uh, charge came online last year and I escaped it. My vehicle was recently thinking about for renewals. It's now fifty dollars a week. That additional revenue, I'm assuming continues to be applied to the payment program, pedestrian improvements as policy figures.
I can address that too quickly.
Yeah, I've asked Lindsay to parse out those new revenues.
Thank you.
And so we'll be working on that, get that to, um, the budget finance committee as soon as possible, so that we can understand how much additional new rep. It was coming in. It's a lot of it's long together, so it's got to have to be pulled out, but we are going to each of those numbers.
Thank you, Phil, very much.
Next slide, please. And again, this is more towards Brookside Elementary and generally speaking, the payments are in very good shape. The widths that accommodate pathways, we have that thirty seventh or seventy seventh handling. That pathways a little on the narrow side. Again, okay, this is a lot of these, these, uh, streets have been paid recently and last eight, five to ten years. So they're, they're holding up pretty well. Obviously, when you get to. Thirty eighth, twenty eighth, those, those streets over there, um, with some twenty feet, that's. That gets pretty narrow. Yeah, I was driving that, uh, that Sunday morning or lots of folks that were out there wanting. Fortunately, very few people go there, drive through there. It's not a cut through, so. If somebody wanted to be brave enough to make those one way streets.
Director Perrigo, just quickly on point, Brookside Boulevard, if I call correctly, was a safe route to school project in the nineties. And I think it's one that we all look at as sort of a model. Uh, I certainly do. I walk it most daily and. That's the kind of meandering kind of traffic calming with, with a nice tree line, giving kind of off side as well. And this would have been marked out too.
Like this. And for the second time, I'll go through this pretty quickly, but again, these are the. Streets that were identified, uh, last year or. For repaving and did not get done. So they're, then unless we'd like to do this, this go around. Yeah, I'm not going to spend too much time, but again. This is, uh, again, P C I, this section cul-de-sac is sixty five. It's in generally good shape. It does have some structural issues. Next slide. As we go down the next few slides, we see that there's, there's additional hatching. There's, uh, additional cracks. As we keep going. This has been patched and patched a hundred times.
So when you see utility structures like that, there are missile lines, that, that's kind of one of the key. Points of concern that would, would make you investigate the road further.
That's one of the things, but it's certainly not. But that's certainly interrupts. Ratability of that. And, and you'll stay on the next slide. One of the problems with some cul-de-secs, they get, they don't necessarily have a lot of traffic, but they do take a beating from garbage trucks, delivery trucks. Stop and go washing nearly does and up run up colors next, next slide.
The cobblestone.
Yeah.
It's coming back.
Yeah.
I have learned of the new church alligator.
Some people call it crocodile. So again, that was the amount of alligator cracking there. That's not for another relatively short period of time. That is going to turn into a reconstruction. The far side. Get in there and start. Yeah. Uh, so this is thirty fourth. Now you can just kind of go every five seconds, ten seconds. I mean, again, this is. And that's, that's my shadow. Yeah, but with the patching, the scratch, there's subsidence on that structure. See that, that manhole is raised from. And that's a huge magic. Again, P C I is sixty, um, so it's in that, that's the spot I would like to get to it. For ninety seconds, this is, this is the one where again, the payment rating seventy five, um, it does have some cracking. Basically the stem of the cul-de-sac, um, which in itself is not the end of the world, but when you go further up to the ball. You start seeing those drainage issues. So that water needs to get off the pavement and that's the. And see that we. We're doing the payment. With that, and then you'll see on the next little slide, it's just major cracks that. That forms, uh, they did some crack ceiling, which sometimes helps. The bundle acts if there's water getting out of that, that into that base and with the breeze loss item, it's. It's time is, is coming out.
Jeff, you're gonna have to speak up a bit because it's always starting to come from outside.
Obviously, much feel. Speaks for itself. Thirty fifth out and, and we'd like to continue that down to hundred eighty seventh. Again, it's been cracked still in the past. Well, again, yeah, that's, that's time. That's, that's come up also. Keep on that.
Two seconds of picture.
Obviously, on thirty fifth, we do have the. Four thirty fifth. This is all thirty fifth still, yes. Right at one eighty seven now. Have that intersection. It's hundred eighty seven now. That's a lot holes forming. There's a number of patches that are in there. Again, because you guys sixty five. We do have some. Stormwater drainage issues that are up there that have been pervasive fallout. And Scott pointed that out. Those things really should be. Tended to. Some perspective, how badly that's, that's.
You'll notice too, with that photo right there, that the finds are missing out of the top of, of the asphalt there. That is the beginning stages of inducing moisture and water to the, the map. Once that happens, it is an accelerating cycle that, uh. Builds very quickly and see a rapid deterioration of road.
Uh, so again, proximity map that we're looking at here, those are the sections of the pavement I'm looking at. Falls within the, um, half mile radius in school, uh, provides options for. There's your access on thirty fifth and hundred eighty seven. And it really addresses the needs for that, that section. As we contribute the cul-de-sac as well as. Finally, it's just the budget allocation that, uh, again, you know, raw cost for the projects, four hundred sixty thousand dollars. Cul-de-sacs average is about sixty four thousand. So if you have to, those three. So and. Sometimes it's, it's relatively small. Small price to pay to get those things done. The beginning issue with a hundred ninety second. Yeah, if, if that does not get done, um, there's the concern that it would fall apart. One of the other comments that was made last time. Was the number of cul-de-sacs and dead ends that we do have, you know, wider. Should they be prioritized or how should that be done? Or do we just miss them altogether? Well, uh, we have a hundred thirty six of these cul-de-sacs and dead ends. And that moves roughly. Fifteen hundred thirty parcels, which, which constitutes about thirty three percent of our residents. That's, it's a significant. So again, if we, we don't do them now.
Thank you. As an informational item, is there a resolution that follows this? Because I believe in the last cycle, there wasn't a resolution. So I wanted to understand whether it's the authority to enter into a agreement. Or a contract for this work without.
Yeah, yeah, I like.
ILA is just a main, uh, an inter local agreement, but in itself doesn't authorize the expenditure of money. My understanding is the mayor has fifty thousand dollar number. But where is the council action to let us do to, to actually enter into.
In past years, it's been approved in the budget. It was not brought back to council for investment. It's authorized, so to the budget.
Budget doesn't authorize expenditure of funds in a contract, just as we have a budget for construction contracts, construction contracts come by the. Council because of the authority of that for the expenditure. So. I'm not following how we can enter into a contract for expenditure of capital funds where the resolution.
We have an inter local agreement. Um, the county is one who prepares the contract on our behalf. So.
But that's just an agreement or a commitment. It's not an agreement for, for Steve. Look to our attorney to say, oh, is it that we are. Entering into a contract for this work.
And you can look at the I L A and see what authority council was granted in that I O A and then certainly.
Yeah, thanks. I will admit, I was initially skeptical about cul-de-sacs. I think seeing these pictures. Seeing. Now, seeing the picture, seeing the P C I values, I'm on board. The one request I would make moving forward up. If we want to prioritize schools, which I think we should, I would encourage, just we should also include Briar Press, Kellogg, Shore Press. Because while those schools are not in Lake Forest Park, their walk sheds are. But I think those should go far as similar.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of when we'll have, uh, sort of at least initial P C I ratings for the entire?
I agree, shout to the county to see if they can help with that.
Next two months, okay. Fingers crossed, yeah.
It's very tiny.
Truly briefly, thanks for the presentation. Um, so as you said, there's twenty seven and a half years to repave the city would be our goal, except that we have a hundred seventeen year cycle. I think I see this as not sustainable. So do we do we have a, I have any sort of, you know, do other cities have this kind of problem?
I suspect everybody has the same thought when I was in. What was, eight two hundred lane miles of pavement and we went out and I went away, we had a hundred miles of pavement, we had a second day.
So is there a plan for trying to make this more sustainable?
That would be a great idea. I think that was partially addressed in last project. But there's priorities that we still have to figure out how to put the limited amount of tons where it rates at. Create multiples together.
Fair enough. Just quickly, issue that's going to see a council member for trying to give you to the question, but Director Perrigo, I want to thank you very much for your your presentation. It's very impressive, and I'm sorry that we're so rushed here today.
Thank you. I still think we're missing what we asked for, the comprehensive plan for mobility infrastructure, including roads, bikeways. And to show and represent the pathways are fog lined with some asphalt on it. Yeah, I think it's just a generous to demonstrate that it's actually a safe walking area. Just because we've got a fogline doesn't prevent your mobility. It's not clear to me that we're actually in some of these areas improving such as putting in interesting curves. Do we have the eighty tactile strips going back? Even down thirty fifth, we've got an area that needs to be repaired, not part of this program. And whether we're doing a pair of streets or a hundred of the peak of that street, which really needs to be repaired. You need to think about not just a rating that represents what we think is just broad rating, we need to break it down because to the point is we can't afford to repave our streets on the cycle that does it every twenty years. I'm.
How long do you think that promote could be made to last then?
It it depends on the the subgrade, it depends on the asphalt, it depends on the people who go down the asphalt, it depends on the amount of traffic that we're having. It depends on a lot of things. And I think if we just take a perspective that we're just paving miles of road, we're not going to address this problem because do the math. But we're also missing the opportunity to group up and expedite access.
Fine, then we wouldn't have to work on that. We'll have to learn how to hire more staff. We're going to have to work on how to get more money in the budget. I think that's a very honest truth of where we need to start. So I think we need to do a lot of work, but you know, I thank you, Jeff, for all the work for that. It's actually the best one I've seen in the twelve years I've been here, but it sucks. I know it sucks, but we really have a lot of work ahead of us to try to figure out how we can figure out how to do all this stuff. It really is hard and it's nothing new. And I can tell you, I drive to Seattle every day and they have a lot more money than us and their roads are a lot worse, so something's not right. So I appreciate that. We'll try to do better, but hopefully, King Town can help us out with that. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting before we go. We've got a one more item. Well, you've got your chambers is totally full. There's about two hundred people in the parking lots, which we need to take this very quick if we move upstairs. Sorry.
Counsel, do you mind if, given the limited amount of time, I just kind of ask direct questions and seem like your responses are rather than a more of a brief flow of discussion? Okay, so you adopted your interim regulations for the retaining wall and told staff, please go get some information on wash dot noise regulations. And so we did that. And so you were given in your packet, the pace information, federal code, and then Washington noise modeling. So given that information, and I hope you all had a chance to look at it. My questions then in looking at what to bring back to you in the ordinance are mainly focused on this section C twelve fifty zero two zero. C six. So that's the one about noise. That's the one that talks about the noise regulation. And the first set, does anybody need a hard copy? I have a hard copy of that here. No, okay. So the first sentence says the applicant shall provide documentation of how the retaining wall design satisfies or exceeds applicable wash dot traffic noise policy procedures. So my understanding from that, from the council discussion, and is that the intent is not to have wash dots decision on noise independently peer reviewed by the city to be able to confirm that they made the right decision, but rather to make sure the information was provided to wash dot and this is the decision wash dot made made, that the city isn't making an independent decision. Was, am I correct? Is that the intent of council or did you want this independently peer reviewed and and the city making decision on whether washout was correct or not?
But from my standpoint, I don't see us creating much thoughts authority on this, and and so I want to be very cautious, want to make sure that we hold wash dot fully accountable, but at the same time, I don't, I do not believe that we can cross that line.
I I have the same answer, but I want to make sure the doc that we police the documentation sufficiently and that it's rigorous enough for us to see that a good job was done.
Sure.
So we don't have people on staff that can do that. So we'll have to, I mean, we just don't. That's a good point. Yeah. Yeah, I did. So you know, this is specialized. I understand what you're saying. It's just having having been involved in big construction projects, there's documentation, there's documentation, you know what I mean? Right, yeah. So I think we're relying on wash dot. Did they get proper documentation for them to make a decision with their regulations? And then we can read it and understand it and make sure at least within our expertise, it looks like a good job. Yeah, oh, I, okay. I just wanted to, anyway, I don't need to elaborate. That makes sense, yeah. And I agree, I think we want to see them, they've done their due diligence and I I would like them to provide some of that background data, even though we don't necessarily know how to read it. If it looks sneaky, then we may opt to get a second opinion, but I I assume we're going to get the drawings and or documentation, okay, yeah, they did it because washed up would do it. That's that's right. This is what they do. Right. They don't anticipate us ever having to question it. I mean, the alternative, I mean, is the city going to deny the permit for their retain ball if you think it's maybe. Yeah, because I think one of the things that I'm challenged with is just right now, looking at the documentation that wash dot has, that we haven't seen what they responded to quite yet, but I already feel like we're a type one because they're adding a lane. And I'll get there. Yeah, and and they're not saying that they're applying. So I guess that to me is like a big hinky like. But do you see what I'm saying is, one of our recommendations is for the administration to go to wash dot and to go to sound transit and see, is this a type one because you're adding a lane or whatever else is that staff has seen on these. So that's administration, though, that's not regulation. So that's how you deal with it there is what I'm saying is, so I'm hearing for this, we're looking at kind of double checking, looking to make sure wash dot did their job, but we're not doing an independent evaluation of it. Curiously, one page that just. Yeah, that's.
Guys, we really need.
Yeah, so what I would suggest, folks, is is this is a bigger topic than we have time for tonight. Let's unfortunately, I would suggest we table this to the committee of the whole meeting. We have a very full committee of the whole meeting coming up on the twenty fourth, I believe. Does anybody have a calendar map? Yeah. And there were some things may have to get punted, including the governance manual, but these are timely. I want to give it the fair time that it deserves. I think this conversation is a really important one.
We will give, we'll get out of notice for the public, for a public hearing on the twenty seventh, just so you know. I can't, I need guys to do that, and I can't do that from the point.
That's right.
It goes into the, it would have to go into the news, he said to the newspaper tomorrow.
Okay, hang on, calendar.
So what, how many other questions do you have for us that you need? I could email you questions. There are like three. I could, I can email you and take the individual responses, see what I get, if I get enough. And then if I if I could just add, I, the the additions in writing that council member for Tony has to see in writing based on our last council meeting that are reflect the public comments primarily stewardship foundations are also, they're apparently modest, they're integrated in here, so that would be part of the thumbs up.
So colleagues, if you're, I'm sorry. But so understanding the time constraints, then I would suggest that unless there are very explicit concerns about this because of the time sensitivity of the twenty seventh, if you have specific questions, address, send them to Ms. Pratt and and if there's something that Ms. Pratt can relay it back to all of us, if there's something that's really challenging that is earth shaking, if not, we need to move forward. Full stop.
I I just want to clarify what our roadmap is. So the plan is to have a public hearing on the twenty seventh and then potentially adopt the final, like no longer interim, but final retainable work minutes on the twenty seventh.
That's correct.
It's possible.
It's possible.
I'm going to send that an email. I'm just refined originally just to. Thank you.